So it might be an opportunity to consider this cabinet discussing possibilities.
Would the adding of the counselor draw in more students to kind of fund that? Or what would you do to fund something like that?
Space. Had that argument for years now.
So I'm at 54 because basically we can only hold between 54 and 57. It's not for the lack of not trying to find somebody. Or say that as a district, I know Tim has been advocating and looking, it's just his money.
Any else?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to kind of go on record and say that, you know, I fully agree with kind of the point that Joyce brought up. I was going to bring that up too. When I look under the hidden W graphics and I've had conversations with her and God over there and that some of the kids, I think when you're talking about 45% of your 54 students, half of your kids have lost an immediate family number. Forty-four percent have been diagnosed with a learning issue. To me, if that doesn't scream that they need a family service counselor, I'm not really sure what else does. Fifty-two percent have been on state assistance. These are high, high-risk kids. You're talking about abuse, socioeconomic, financial, familia, every way, every way. They're high, 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 high risk. I think that needs to be addressed.
Any else?
Yes, sir.
Just two quick things. I agree with both of them too. And I missed the stories that we got last year.
These kids incredible testimonials.
The testimonials were awesome. Each time, I'm not going to be here anymore, but you guys are blessed with it, at least brickwork too. Because it's just, they're so awesome.
They will be coming. She will be honoring them in December. We did realize that in that conversation, but we wanted to, we've done that now for three years, quickly. And we felt we were beyond that point.
I think it has to be the whole presentation, but at least one or two or something.
Yeah, I'm just explaining why. We wanted to, this is really a unique program that she put a ton of time and effort. And we really wanted to highlight that. And so we talked about bringing the kids back. We know that is a important part with the board and everything. But we wanted to push beyond that and really highlight this work here. And that we'll be looking at December to brick these co-forth.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. This is an amazing program. I don't want to spend too much time on this, so if the answer's long, don't worry about it. But I just thought I'd put out there just to kind of close the gap. I agree that a counselor would be great. I agree with my fellow board members in understanding your request. Is there any way you can kind of quickly let us know what resources students are provided currently? If they are in crisis or in need? How is that addressed now? If there's no one there? Just you're the resource. And is there, there's no outside external resource that they're given?
Oh, if they need to be referred. So if they're in crisis, crisis, we have them go to town around, you know, for any suicidal animation.
Lisa is a fully certified social worker.
Yeah, I understand. I just.
Goes at crossroads for many years and has fulfilled her goal.
Yeah, the school social worker.
Yeah, I understand. Just from a capacity standpoint, I just thought, you know, if it gets beyond to a point where capacity doesn't allow, or it's an issue that you're well-trained to know, I just wonder.
Right. So if it's something that it's a crisis, like you said, then, you know, of course we're going to refer them out. But for crisis counseling during the day, you know, help cases of days.
Yeah.
I spend an hour or so, you know, with the student. They work in my office sometimes. I do come to them and they work in my office for a day.
So really the answer is there is really no doubt that you guys are the ones who have that gap. And that, I know you tried to make that clear in the presentation, but I just wanted to make sure that this is not something that's just necessarily not being addressed, it's something that you guys are doing and leaving that in, not for now to the best of your good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Order of Education Matters, we have a resolution.
Yeah, so before we move into resolution, Gordon was here from Truunawper. And Gordon, why don't you just sort of speak to the resolution that the board has reported in the night.
Thank you and good evening. Before you, you have a resolution to approve a purchase agreement for 13.61 acres of real estate located immediately south of your high school property, running along North Oxford Road. And with Sam is circulating right now, a couple of property diagrams. But to kind of show you what the property looks like, I'm sure that if you've been out there, you know that there's some pretty substantial grade changes. But in terms of the purchase agreement, we met with the seller a couple of weeks ago. This is on a fast track in terms of moving forward. We've had several discussions with both the school districts engineers and surveyors, as well as the seller's surveyors and engineers from Difos. So we're looking at all the issues right now in terms of the site. What the purchase agreement will do, if the board approves a resolution, is simply tie the property up so we can then do due diligence to see if the contingencies are satisfied. And one of the contingencies that need to be addressed, and if you look at the first diagram, which is a, it says water easement, sanitary sewer easement, there are two black lines going across. This diagram shows where there have been recorded easements for the property. On the top, it's the water main easement, the bottom is the sanitary sewer easement. Now, these are basically placekeepers for water and sanitary sewer mains to go across the property from the seller's property to the west. There's nothing in the ground, so there are no pipes or anything else like that. These are simply recorded easements at this time that the township required the developer to put in place to assure that the developer will be able to connect to the utilities in North Oxford Road eventually when his property is developed. So our challenge here is to take these easements and move them. And specifically, the water main easement is, it goes east to west across a normally part of the property, along the borderline, the school district's south property. So if we were to move ahead right now and simply purchase the property, there would be an easement that would have to be crossed before anything could be developed on the border of the school and the new property. So the other property diagram looks like this. There is a yellow line going across. That is the probable location of the sanitary sewer. And below that, at the bottom, is a blue line. That is the proposed location of a water main easement. So what we're talking about doing is moving the easements so they're to the far south of the property. You also notice on this diagram, there's a stormwater management zone. It's kind of in the middle and shaded in yellow. And what that is for is to drain stormwater down, given the topography of the property, from both the developer's property as well as the school property. It's a great hope that there's a detention base in currently on the school's property that eventually can be eliminated and that property reclaimed and used and transfer the water that's currently going in that detention basin down to the south, to the new area. So what we're trying to do, I'll say the engineers are working on right now cooperatively, is to maximize the space to the north of the property that's adjacent to the school property so it can be developed. And move everything we can down to the south. So what we're looking at right now is not a final drawing. We had a conversation this morning with the engineers about the possibility of taking the stormwater management zone and actually moving it all the way to the southwest where the water main is currently showing us is being located, moving the water main north and seeing what we can do to move everything further south. That's really the key here. We've got 13.61 acres. We need to pick up as much acreage as we can for the school to develop. So that's part of the due diligence that's described in the purchase agreement. Here we've got 17 in the purchase agreement. Provides the school district has the right to do any due diligence if desires in terms of the property. If the district's not satisfied, then the deposit amount, which is $25,000, will be fully refundable. So in terms of the purchase agreement, and what we're looking at doing here, there are a lot of different moving parts that have to be figured out before closing. We're on a very tight timeline. Generally, this type of project, we have 90 to 120 days. We're looking at putting it together in 30. The due diligence period closes on December 27. Not to say that couldn't be extended, but the downside is if we go into next year, the property will be taskable for a year. We have to close on before December 31st to get the property removed from the tax roll and exempted. So our charge right now is to move very quickly. The engineer for the seller's been very cooperative, has a lot of due diligence already done in terms of survey, local work, phase one. There's no phase one environmental audit, there's no phase two for this property. The environmental consultant has determined there's no hazardous substances that were noted during their inspection. So right now, many of the due diligence issues have been resolved, but we need to address the easements as part of this transaction in the next three weeks. So we've been working daily, corresponding with local district and the engineers for both the seller and the school district to put things in place. So if the board approves the purchase agreement tonight, then we'll continue doing that. But again, we're on a very tight timeline and we need to move on this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions in terms of the purchase agreement. I will tell you, it's got the standard terms and conditions that you generally see in a commercial property transaction. In terms of the seller being required to provide title insurance and initially a title commitment that we review to determine if there are any title issues. And if they are, they're either resolved or again, the money, the deposit amount's fully refundable. Same thing with all of our other due diligence issues. If we get into this and it appears that the cost to land balance because of the steep grade changes is too substantial, the school district won't close, it will have the deposit amount refunded. Again, I'm happy to go through each paragraph of the purchase agreement, but I will tell you that it's got the protections built into the school district that as representing the buyer, I always like to see. So happy to answer any questions on anything you may have in terms of the agreement, the resolution, or the diagrams.
Thank you, Gordon. My recommendation would be that we get a motion and a second before that happens. If without it, we don't need to have the conversation. So we have a motion by Dr. Braisington.
Move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Bailey. No questions, discussion? Yes?
On this diagram here, are we looking to move the easement all the way to the south from here? Is this the only one easement? Is that what I understood, or is there supposed to be two easements?
There's a water and a sanitary sewer easement. The water easement is on the north, or is the concern, the immediate concern. So we would be moving both the water from the north to the south. The sanitary sewer easement is already, it transverses the property, but it needs to be moved further south to pick up as much acreage as possible for the school's use of the property.
Like the fence? Doesn't go with cows in the middle?
It isn't. And again, the seller, developer had to put these in place to get approvals to develop their adjacent property to the west. So these are placekeeping easements without anything in them currently. But eventually, there will be infrastructure put in. I know that the developer has a sanitary sewer agreement with the township where he's posted $515,000 in a letter of credit. So the township can collect the $515,000 if it does not construct the sanitary sewer that he's required to, to reconstruct.
Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Dare with me, this is not my skill set. But my questions, I have two quick questions. First of all, the stormwater management zone, just for clarification, this is not part of the land that can be built on, is that right?
Right. It's well, it's all the way to the south, and that's why it's being placed there, because the topography of both the seller's adjacent property and this property, as well as the school's property is much higher. So the intent is to flow all of the stormwater, bring each down to the south, so it can be put in one area. And hopefully, again, to remove the detention area that's on the school property already and reclaim that to be developed.
What does it look like if this land is eventually built on? What, is that a rain garden? Or is that, what does that look like? When I pull up in front of whatever building that is?
It'd be a big pond.
It's a water.
That's it. Okay.
You can put some koi in there.
All right, second quick question. I've heard you say that the deposit is refundable. I think that's fantastic. That's great that we do that. What is the risk that we run? What are you worried about, or what would we be worried about with the condensing of the timeline? What are we going to miss? What's the possibility?
Well, we have a lot of, we have several different parties involved in this. We've got the seller, we've got the township, we've got the school district. We all have to come to an agreement. The easements that were granted, were granted to the township. So the township will need to release these easements so we can then re-record them. The seller has got to agree to move these easements. We have, in fact, this drawing right here is a slightly modified version of what we were provided by the seller's engineer. So the seller's working with us to relocate the easements. But when I say crunching down the time periods, especially this time of year, can be a little challenging given the holidays. So we need to put things in place. We need to have, once we agree to the location to relocate the easements, we need to have legal descriptions developed so then we can release or vacate the existing easements and record where the new easements will be located. So it's a lot of engineering, it's a lot of.
Coordination.
It is, yes.
And stress, maybe. Just, you know, late nights or whatever. But do you see anything of concern that would fall off the plate because of the condensed timeline that you think might be important?
At this point, we've got a very willing seller. I believe we've got a willing buyer, being the school district. And the township, we've made contact with them already a couple of times. So everyone's aware of this, and it can be done. There's no question. We just have to move on.
Thank you. So out of that 13.6 acres, how many acres would be buildable, sort of speak, with these new easements?
That's an excellent question, and that was.
I'm sorry, I don't know the.
It's a great question.
It's a great question. Tim were saying, maybe you can help me. We've come back and forth today with the engineer and the surveyor on what can start the maximum. Can you remember at the end what we were at?
Again, this is just an estimate, but based upon the discussion that we had today, a rough estimate is at least eight acres of that existing 13.6. In our current estimation, would be buildable, assuming that these were able to be moved, both the easements, to a redesigner's, that can be moved. And in addition to the fact that the current retention pond could be shrunk out, made a little bit more flat rather than this ball that's in its current, that it draws.
And we're certain, even if we didn't have easements involved, we would still have detention areas. So we're talking about 13.6 acres. We're still going to net out fewer acres because we're going to have our own easements in place. We're going to have our own detention facilities. So it would be less than what we're talking about now, but still, the property would be incumbent.
Tim, can you just address again what the district is thinking about? Do you want to push backward if you move forward? This is discussed in the full session.
So, I mean, as of today, we don't have any existing plans. I would say that the main motivation for us looking at this is this is the last piece of land that actually touches our current facility at the high school. It's my opinion that, a couple of things. One, I think Oxford will continue to grow. And two, I don't see Oxford ever becoming a two-high-school town. If both of those things are true, then at some point, we're going to need to expand our facilities at the high school. Whether that's additional practice fields, whether that's additional buildings, whether that's central office space, you name it. I think that it's incumbent upon us to at least investigate it and see if it's a worthy investment so that, in your timeframe, 10 years down the road, we want to expand the high school location. I really don't want us to have students walking across either Ray Road or North Oxford Road if we were to buy another piece of property because we wanted to stay in relatively the same area. And so for those reasons, I think that at some point down the road, a superintendent beyond me and a board beyond us will come back and say, boy, I am sure glad that the board back in 2018 took action to get this land, to use it however the school may be necessary. I can't, yeah, I can't specifically say that we've got exact ideas of what that land would be used for today. It's more for the potential use is really what I'd say.
I just wanted to be on the record.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention, I've been with Truunawper for 34 years, and many deals that I was involved in the 80s are now, before now, have come to fruition in terms of expanding facilities and public policies and everything. It makes a lot of sense to, when the property is available, there are a lot of different factors that go into it for any property. But it does make sense to consider adjacent property because you never know when you may need it. And when you do need it, if you don't have it, you can apply it to different means. Generally, it's much more expensive and it's not ideal in some sense. It's like the bus students that got to, avenue crossing, you know, streets and those.
Can we discuss a quick agenda plan?
Yes. Mr. Bailey? Just a couple of questions. So we're going to basically remove the current retention pond, so we would be able to reclaim some of that property as buildable, or would that not be?
The engineers are working on that. They've not provided a guarantee that we can remove it, but that would be the intent. If we can shift where the water's currently being stored to the south, and, you know, there's different formulas of calculations and the RMA coefficients need to be satisfied. But if they can be satisfied, then my understanding is this property could be reclaimed and have the stormwater transferred to the south.
And is the property currently zoned for what we would be using it for, or is that a hurdle we're going to have to run against?
It's currently zoned.
And do we have a kind of a pulse of the township on moving these? Do we think they're going to be on board with it, or is that going to be a hurdle?
We've just had very preliminary conversations. It's my understanding the township is in favor of the school acquiring the property. And until we have actual proposed routes and courses for the new easements, it's our thought to wait and meet with the township once we say, here's where we want to go. And really, it's from an engineering standpoint, as long as it's the gravity, the sanitary sewer is a gravity system, so the engineers will have to provide a route and course that will allow the sanitary sewer to drain into North Oxford Road at the proposed location. If it's too far south, then it would be above the ground and obviously wouldn't rain out and sink. With the water main, according to the seller's engineer, that can be put anywhere. It doesn't have to be anywhere north of Smolka Long.
Yes, sir.
I have questions regarding, you said that the current owner has an obligation to put in a system that they bonded up to, what do you think, you said 500,000 or something like that? Which of the properties of these two over here do they own? Or both? Both? Is the one where the condos are being built now?
I think so. Have you read it or whatever? I think so.
In terms of the $515,000 of letter of credit, that was put in place and there's engineering that's done to put an eight-inch line in, which the town, the school district's engineers confirm will provide sufficient capacity for whatever the school district wants to do on this parcel. So if the school acquires this parcel, then the sanitary sewer will be there to accept whatever is built on the parcel.
Okay. But I guess I'm getting, I'm confused as to what the reason for that requirement for them to put that in is. Is what else is planned over on those other properties versus, are they doing it for us? Are they doing it for the township?
No, they're, my understanding from reviewing the sanitary sewer agreement is they had to run the sanitary, in this case, to the east versus the west. So they had to break apart from going to, you know, M.
M24.
So on this phase of the project, they've got to take it the other way. And I don't think that the seller had any other option other than to get their approvals to do what they're doing now and what they're going to do in the future. The township required the money to be put up front, which I think is a really good idea.
Oh, so what additionally is going to happen there is going to require that versus what's already going on?
That's correct. All the infrastructure and we have engineered drawings to show where all the streets are going to be located, where the leads are going into. to be located, where the leads are going into the facilities.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Why are they being required? They have this vacant piece of land. There's already houses built or condos or whatever they are. So why do we need this? Okay, I get it now. And that's what I was looking for.
Because the township said if you want your approvals, you need to put money up front. So give me a letter of credit. Made a lot of sense because it's going on the side.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any last questions before we vote on the motion? Yes?
Just more of a comment. I just want to make sure for our constituencies that this is very, very clear where the money is coming from. That this is a general fund, proposed purchase. This is not bond money or any other, you know, secret stash money that they accuse them sometimes. Yeah, but I just want to just be very, very clear on record.
To be clear, there is no secret stash.
Other than a stamp.
It's not there either. And this is general fund. And it would be against the law for us to use bond or sinking fund proceeds if this is passed with this law. I would end up in stripes, and I don't think it's in stripes in the same court.
Right. Just wanted to add a record.
Yes.
Gordon, I just have one last question. Do we need to read this two-page preamble publicly?
No, it doesn't have to be read. You can reference the resolution.
Okay.
It's in a certain way.
Very good.
There's a public document, so if anyone wants to have it, where they will put the information.
Can we post it on the website? There's nothing in there that we can't, we wouldn't, that would preclude us from posting that on?
Uh-huh.
The first agreement, once the board approves it, is a public document.
So what on the motion, do we want to refer to the resolution by name? Is there a title? I heard this language fine. Just as presented? All right, so that's how the motion was made? Yes. We already, so ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Weaver?
Yes, we have a presentation on some virtual curriculum. Mrs. Shell, I think she can come up and introduce her partner. This is to do with the Flex program.
Yeah, so we have two curriculum for our general classes that I presented through the years. Project-based learning to add to our library of classes. So we've got two of those, and we'll talk about that in then our new Flex program that we launched this fall. So really excited about that. We had quite a bit of input from the community, the online learning community, the homeschool community, people who school at home, they still consider themselves homeschoolers, but they're in public school now, so they just school at home. So lots of input from that group that they wanted some more flexibility. And Tim took it all to you to be able to provide now a way to look through the standards in a little bit more flexible way and to provide flexible oversight with the district with carrying a home curriculum. So we're excited to be able to present what's been going on at OVA since early August. Pretty exciting, mainly our group is, that's highly, is in Farmington. Is everybody down there? I'm Tim Vida. It was really good to see it in action. So do you all have any of your board packets? So it's been an interesting journey over the last couple of months trying to get this all ready. It's still a work in progress. Our custom classes, I would just say first are really based, or actually use the guidelines from I-N-H-O-L and from Quality Matters. So the two big leaders in setting standards and bar in online learning, quality. So I wanted to make note of that, that we already, when we're looking at curriculum or developing online curriculum, with our online management system, MyHoop or our Buzz platform, we try to reach that bar of a standard. The aesthetic, how it looks, the color, the layout, how it's explained, is it differentiated, things like that? So those are some factors to keep a little bit.
You did a good job, Tom.
So we use both of those. And then we have, so before we get into the Flex program, the two general electives are Auto Care and Native American Cultures. And that, those are really two classes that our community groups are very interested in, that practical application of being able to care for your own automobile. It's a life skill and a great general elective class to be able to offer. So it's a hands-on, project-based class. Native American Cultures, a lot of requests for that. So we developed a curriculum for that. That was also in the board package. And then Jordan's going to take off with the Flex program. Like I thought it was established this fall. And I just want to say, I think OVA, for me, it's been a journey created the school. You know, everybody thinks of online classes, joy, edutainment, the old days, right? We've really progressed into very personalized. In fact, I was at the doctor this morning, and my doctor was asking me about OVA. She has many kids. She said, I hear about your school here at the doctor's office. I said, oh, really? And she just had this idea that it was just kids sitting at a computer at home. And so I said, really, we've been aiming at a mixed animal, we need to, what we call the hybrid school, that our kids can be treated, online, blended, fusion, flex, you name it. It's basically we created personalized pathways for kids. So to me, that's the fact we can do right. They can be here at the middle school, they can be at the high school, they can be taking partnerships, they can be taking classes. So that's pretty cool. So as we progress in this personalized journey, we're really moving in a competency-based, towards competency-based learning, it's hard to say that, that model. And it's going to take some time to get there. The state is really pushing it. Things came out again today that you master competencies or mastery-based kind of foundation for learning, which makes sense, right? You learn and then you move on. So in this Flex model, it really pairs well with that. We're doing lots of research. Jordan joined OVA last spring and has worked in competency-based schools and hybrid type of environment. So he's been on the team and is going to be able to explain a little bit more of what the Flex curriculum looks like.
So the whole point is, just as the name says, it's Flex. You know, we wanted to design a program that allows students to pick the pathway of their education, really tailor it to the individual, to their strengths, to their needs. And so what we have is a program where we have kids who would traditionally be homeschooled or shared time or part-time, now joining us as full-time students. And the way the program works, as you may be familiar with, is they're going to be with us onsite one or two days a week, and then they'll also take care of the other part of their education at home. So you have all these different kids, and we know what they're taking onsite with us. But while they're at home, they're responsible for their own learning. So we still want to provide that option to students to pick their own path, but we are a public school district. We are still responsible to teach the common core state standards. We're still responsible to make sure that our elementary school students have the skills and the tools they need to be ready for middle school. And our middle school students need the skills to make that lead to high school. So this is course, this is where this course comes into play. And for those of you who don't know, my background is in hybrid education. I was a hybrid education teacher in Novi. I taught project-based learning and status-based grading. I also have taught NC and I taught fully online. So this is kind of, this is my background. And so this is when I really like to geek out. This course is going to look completely different for every single student. What we're doing is we're tracking what the students are learning at home. We're assigning them a teacher of record. We're getting samples of work, testing them for mastering, making sure that they have the necessary skills at their age level. And then we are not filling the gap, but supplementing what they're learning in class and expanding their learning and making sure that our kids are ready and they're at the same level as their NC peers down the road through this course. And so this course molds to the student. If you take Math C at home, the math curriculum, or Saxon math, or Singapore, whichever class you take, we're going to shift and alter this course to make sure that you are a fully well-rounded student and that you are prepared to make that next step. And that's our online component. And then at RHG down in Farmington, they have a focus in ELA and science. These are all very much project-based, hands-on courses. This is simply a list of their ELA courses. I had a chance to go through each and every single one of these courses, evaluate the curriculum, see the holes in the common core that they currently have, and then come up with a plan to best approach, making sure that these courses are fulfilling the needs of our public school, our full-time public school students. And then, of course, the next one is the science, also very project-based, which I love, hands-on, it's all about application. And again, they actually touch on almost everything that we need. We'll simply supplement some of the material with content-specific. I think electricity and magnetism was something that they're missing in Lower El. We'll simply add a unit there. So these students are very prepared to be public school students here at Oxford. We just need to add the necessary variables to make that education whole.
You can see, these are the kids that are always hard at work out in Farmington. Those are actual pictures from the fall, working in their classroom. That's the group that we're piloting it. So back to this idea of competency-based education, you're going to be hearing probably a lot about that in the next coming years. And I put this quote because it just really spoke to me about what we're doing. It even changes the basic architecture of school regarding more flexible and multi-age groups and learning spaces. So the idea of kids at the same age moving the old industrial model, we're starting to kind of break out of that mold and this program should help us with that. So we're really excited about it and look forward to your approval. If you want to know more, it's on the slideshow about what the MBE has to say about it and exactly what it is. And it does fit in the Michigan's top ten strategic plan. So I feel like this program is definitely one that fits into the school's vision, mission, and OVA, as well as the State Michigan Department of Ed.
And come out your questions. Dan?
This might be a question for Tim and more so than anybody. With the change in Lansing, are we concerned at all that making this type of shift with the budgets that would be? Do you think the change in Lansing will have an adverse or a positive reflection on the budget when it comes to virtual learning?
I believe that I'd please the. I'll answer it this way.
I'll double it.
I'll answer it this way.
What's your feel?
My feel is, we know what's working. I would say that we have a better idea of what this type of education looks like at the ground level than what Lansing has an idea of. And I think it's upon us to help determine that future and not be a victim of that future. I think it still takes a lot of, it will take a continued amount of political energy of making sure that we're telling our story. But, you know, whether there's an actual physical change in person at the governor level or state legislator level, or even if the people stay the same in those positions, the reality is they're all constantly changing their positions. And so I think that if we stay true to our vision and our mission of preparing students for a global society and an environment in which they're going to live, we can't go wrong. And, yeah, I'll be willing to preach that here in Oxford or in Lansing or wherever else that's required. So I don't know. At the end of the day, it's 50/50. I'm sure just, you know, just like in this last year, you know, all along, the state had been pushing, do this, do this, do this. And we made some huge investments in OVA, and we pushed all along. And then all of a sudden, the governor came back, the current governor, and said, I'll say it this way, holy cow, these few districts are really successful. They're doing really good. We can't spend this money. Okay, we're going to limit growth. So new law for Michigan, you only can be capped at 10% growth. That wasn't with the existing governor. So, I mean, I don't know. Do we have risk no matter what? Yes. And I say we just, we keep doing the best that we can. We keep forging along. And I don't know, Phyllis Thomas said it similar, but somebody said, the best way to predict the future is to invent it. And I say that's what we're trying to do with our education in Oxford.
Nice to answer. Thank you, Becky Hamilton, said, I think that's what happened in the spring, is that I was approached about starting more of a blended model, not all online. And that's really, our conversation was about, because we didn't know what the landscape was going to be and to be diversified, right? To have students partially NC, partially virtual, and to be able to be flexible. Thus, Flex, that, I think that's kind of why we're listening to our community, listening to, you know, what's going on in the legislature and trying to meet the needs and be prepared.
And actually, can I just add one more thing? You know, I've been an educator in Troy, Novi, Northville. I've been to, despite my involvement in a lot of districts, I have never felt better as an educator than here at Oxford with this program. Seeing these kids come from the online environment or part-time environment or homeschooling environment, having them come into our classrooms with our teachers of record and flushing out some weaknesses in their education and then providing that support, that intervention to get them to where they need to be so they can have that continuation of success. You know, a lot of these kids are elementary, you know, very, very developmental years. Catching that early. Because some of the things that we've seen from our local homeschool population, you know, I'm glad, I'm really glad to fulfill that void. I'm glad that we as a district are there and providing that education because that's, you know, that's the mission, that's the point. Nobody signed up to be an educator to jump their hoops. So.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a great point. I think my question kind of goes right along those same lines. And thank, in case I missed it in this presentation, I apologize in advance. But what do we know yet how advanced education, four-year colleges, even organizations who are hiring from straight out of high school, do we know yet how they perceive this program? Do we have feedback for them?
Well, I think the person is putting in that fact that we're giving students who were accepted this last year to the University of Michigan. Our kids are going all over the place. So we have West Point, Spudon, West Point, we have K-State, OU. I mean, it's anymore, I think our reputation in this state has grown so much over the last eight years that.
That helps?
Yeah, it helps. And I think being a public, a local public school, very strong foundation, this side served as well.
But you haven't necessarily had comments specific to the programs that we're currently offering or others who have implemented this haven't had comments specific to that curriculum? I was just curious.
You're talking about South Black?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not. Yeah, it's K-8. So I can tell you, no college admission is going to look bad. It's, this is K-8 at the moment. It's, this is, this is K-8 at the moment.
Yeah, this is great. It's so innovative, so please don't think I'm making in any way critical, I think it's fantastic, I'm just curious.
No, it's, it's, you know, time will tell, and that's because it is very young, you know, the unsub scores once kids test, or start to see how we're doing.
Yeah, and like Ken said, it's really brand-new almost, yeah, everywhere.
It is.
Very much so.
Dan? More of a comment than a question. A previous question wasn't directed to sway anyone politically, feel of how things are going to happen in Lansing, but I guess was more sort of to bring out the point that we have to look at what's happening around us, even outside of education. And you look at today, what's going on, General Motors, they've realized they need to change. They need to change the way they do things. And if we're going to sit back and say, well, we're going to educate the way we've always educated, and we're just going to get the same result, I think the state needs to look inside itself and say, you know what, those districts that have innovated should probably be rewarded, because, let's face it, students in the state of Michigan, scores have gone down. So how are we going to change that? How do you stem that tide? How do you make it go in a reverse fashion in what's gone? And, you know, I, I think we're doing the right thing. We need to just keep an eye on the financial risk, and I, and I'm very confident that we've been doing that. It's very measured. I think a lot of folks, or I think some folks think we just throw things out there and hope like heck they work, and, you know, the budget be done, you know. That's the toughest thing from the truth. I think our team is very, very well, they do a very, very good job of minding the store, let's just put it that way. I appreciate the work that you've all been doing, and keep us making sure we're out of trouble. Okay? Yes, sir.
You mentioned that we have students like going to West Point and various other programs kind of tagging up with Jenny's question. Do we have a way of tracking or bragging about the results that we've had and the successes? So, you know, like the, the platform in Lansing, we can say, look what we're doing, and here's the success rate, you know, so we stay as the lead on this.
I'm going to answer that if I can. The short answer is yes. That's why we can continue to see such huge growth numbers. And I also think it's yes, because Lansing sees it, and I think they're getting pressure. And other schools are feeling pressure, and that's why they don't like it.
And for me, I measure success when I get calls, people want to come visit all the time, right? So they want to know what you're doing, how you're doing it. I hosted, telling that the other day, they want to know what we're doing, they hear about it. Or about, I think, where kids are going graduating, you know, we're not perfect family, and some kids, it doesn't work for them, but we are providing a service to the kids who really need this.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
FTE, everything under shoulders, umbrellas, well, it's not all of them yet, but it's probably over $1,600. It could be our largest school, school in the district.
Right, that's our, I, bigger than our high school.
Yeah.
Mr. Barber?
Good evening again. First on the list, first item is just an update, safety, security update. As all of you are aware, we've been doing Alice training for several months now, and wanted to give you a quick update on the different employee groups, and also other individuals in the district, such as substitutes that have been trained on what Alice principles. We had our food service staff trained in October. We also had parapoes, substitutes, and others, including some volunteers, trained during, on November 20th. And I just wanted to mention that this is ongoing training. So if we've missed any, this was, and I know we have, this is not something that is just a, we're one and done, it's, it's obviously something that we incorporate within the district, and we're going to be continuing this training going forward. In addition, from a student perspective, at the elementary level, we've introduced Alice-oriented, age-appropriate books, obviously, at the elementary level, and also introduced enhanced lockdown procedures at the elementary level. We started that during the week of November 12th. In addition to that, we have our seventh-hour students, well, the presentation and discussion at the high school in regards to the Alice principles. And that started the week of November 12th as well. And then also, at the middle school, beginning in January, during advisory hour, we're going to be introducing that in the middle school for, again, our Alice, our Alice principles. So I just wanted number one to be aware that, again, we trained most of our staff, and again, we've been disseminating that amongst our student population in a very age-appropriate manner. I do want to have some bad news. We applied for a district safety grant way back in, I believe it was September now, and we found out that we did not get the funding. There was $25 million available through the state, across the state, for public school districts, as well as ISDs, and also charter schools as well. There was $25 million available, and there was, it was oversubscribed, in other words, $69 million was asked for. And so we were part of the 437 applications, and only 114 public school districts received funding. So while it's unfortunate, it's one of those things where we'll continue to apply for grants going forward. I had heard, I don't know if this is true, that they may be having additional funding similar to what was already put out there 2024, in the next, next several months. Don't know if that's through Michigan State Police as this was, or through another venue in the state, but that was something that's been, that's been talked about. And so I, again, going forward, we're going to apply for any grants that we are aware of. And so I'll put it out to anyone here, or anyone that's listening, but if you know of any grants, please contact me. Again, I'm all ears, they're not just physically large, but they can hear pretty well. So I'll definitely use those to apply for further grants. In addition to that, we at least annually have a district-wide safety meeting, security meeting, that's normally held at Oxford High School, and I want to put it out there that, even though I haven't put out the invites yet, I'm looking, looking to have this meeting on Thursday, December 13th, at the PAC at OHS, starting at nine o'clock in the morning, until about 10:30 or 11:00 o'clock. And so we invite, just so everyone's aware, we invite parents, we invite, you know, certain fire, and obviously police, and others in the community, as well as staff as well, to talk about our current state of safety and security in the district. So I want everyone to be aware of that as well. Thank you. Any questions in regards to the safety and security?
Any comments or questions on the safety? How about letter B?
Letter B, I have a resolution, an annual resolution for our summer tax levy. So again, just a, just a play out, we, we as public school districts, most of our collection for both operating and debt levy for our residents happens in the summer months. And so we have an annual resolution that we just asked the board to, again, approve so that we can continue to levy our taxes in the summertime. We collect approximately $12 million of our $14 million in both operating and debt in the summertime, so it's crucial that we, that we have this resolution passed, and it's due by December 31st. And so that is currently in front of you, and I ask that, you know, that we vote it on this.
Dan? Please. Move to approve the summer tax resolution to continue the summer tax levy. Is there support? Jenny Guthrie? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sam. Mr. Pass?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the board for approving our personal recommendation of our Ibrahim, who's a mentor, concert, content teacher at the Virtual Academy. We've been interviewing for some other positions as well, other additional staff for the virtual programs, and we'll have some of those recommendations in upcoming meetings. We're still in the process of finalizing some of those. But also tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing some folks who were, were hired in the, in the fall previously, who have now obtained tenure with the state of Michigan. And for general purposes, it's a five-year timeline, there's a curve out that some folks can achieve that in four years if they're highly effective, for three consecutive years, which is certainly not, not common. So a significant accomplishment, and we've invited the teachers to come today, we may only have a couple here, but we'd love to acknowledge them and the hard work that they've done, so. So we will announce these folks, if they're not here, at least we'll get to publicly recognize them. And if you are here, coming up, we will certificate for you. So Gail Kozira, she is a teacher at OVA, and started on October, October 2nd, she's not here tonight. We'll have a certificate that we will, we will get to her. Laura Merritt, is Laura here?
I'm here.
Hi, Laura. So Laura's at the Virtual Academy, started in September of 2013. Fan Lee, Chinese teacher at Oxford High School, was hired in October of 2013. I don't think Fan Lee's here, but congratulations to her. Adriana Zaragoza, elementary teacher in Lakeville, hired in October 2013. I don't believe she's here, congratulations to her. And then Amy Greenspan, who was a counselor at the Oxford Virtual Academy, had tenure prior to coming to Oxford. So congratulations to all of those folks, and all the hard work and dedication that they put in, so thank you.
So school board, why don't we make that official? How about a motion? Dr. Brazington?
Move to approve the 2018-19 annual tenure recommendations as presented. Tenure recommendations are as follows. Gail Kozira, effective 10/2/17. Laura Merritt, effective 9/9/18. Fan Lee, effective 10/1/18. Adriana Zaragoza, effective 10/15/18. Amy Greenspan, effective 10/31/18.
Is there support? Heather? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Student Services?
Good evening. On November 7th, we submitted our preliminary FTE for the fall. That should be audited in January, and then we'll get the audited numbers probably in March or April. The total FTE that we submitted was 6,513. So that is up from 6,830, was our, in the year. I know, Heather, you had asked about OVA, the FTE that we submitted for OVA was 1,044. Thank you. More to come after the audit. Chris's goal was that it always goes up, not down. Yeah. Good call.
Anything from the board for Student Services? Good. Thank you so much. We did that, didn't we? Yeah. Unscheduled audience participation, the right for someone to come and talk for five minutes? Anybody? 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 All right. Long list of scheduled activities. Final board comments before we go into closed session. Jenny Guthrie?
I'll keep it short, this is the kind of meeting I won't truly miss. I'm so sad already that I'm not going to be part of this board moving forward, but it's really exciting, exciting to be allowed to have, and I think it's so going to be a wild tech. So thank you to all the presenters, all the great information tonight.
Thank you.
Cory? I, I kind of like the promise of this meeting, and I don't know if we intended it to be this way, but if you kind of look through the topic, we are investing in the future, I mean, with everything. I mean, we started off with the property, with, you know, we may not touch this for 10 years, but we're preparing for it. And it's, it's a good investment for the school, for future generations. Same thing with, with OVA, looking at the next generation of how we're going to be educating kids, we're looking at the future. And tenure, we're bringing on valuable assets to the school. You know, now what's benefiting us now is where we're going to be in the next three to five to 10 years, and it's impressive, I'm, I'm honored to be part of this.
Thank you. Thank you, good job. Mr. Stafford?
Similarly, I want to thank all the presenters tonight. Great programs, definitely looking into the future, and that's what, that's what, in order to survive as a school district these days, you have to think out of the box, and that's the way you do it, by trying to predict what's going to be and be the pioneer. You don't always, you, you take some flak when you're the, when you're blazing the trail, and that's what's happening. And it's happened before here, and it's happening again, and I'm just, I'm real glad to see it. And also sorry that I won't be around much longer after this, but I feel that I was a big part of what happened the last four years, so I'm excited for that. So, thank you.
Jenny Guthrie? Chair. I'm sorry, looking at Heather going, sorry, Ms. Schaper.
I echo really what everybody else said, kind of Cory, I hit the beyond head. I really do feel like we are, we are moving ahead in the right direction. I think OVA, their enrollment numbers are so impressive, and what Janet is doing over there, offering this whole flex program, personalized pathways, I really like that. And even if we don't use this property for brick and mortar, even if we don't have to build an actual educational facility building, we can use it for multiple things. Transportation, you know, we need the space for them, we need space for bridges, bridges needs to grow. You know, we need lots of space for other stuff, so that is just a good business decision. And that's what a good, effective board does, is it makes not everyday decisions on what's going on in the building, but what can we do as a district to ensure the security of our kids' education? And I'm glad to be a part of it too. So good stuff. Thank you for everybody who presented, and thank you Deja for hosting us.
It's actually Alitha. There's, Alitha's.
Yes. Thank you.
In your building. Our building, Alitha. Our building.
Co-hostess is.
Dan?
Thank you. Co-hostess is, I'll. First, I want to, kind of want to echo what everybody said, and first and foremost, want to thank Jenny and Mark for their time on the board, and Dr. Guthrie as well. So before we get too far, I know how the holiday schedule gets, and some of us, you know, can't be here, and so I want to make sure as a board, we're all together, and we thank the leadership that you've all provided to our district, and the friendship as well. So thank you all. Alitha, I want to say that the information that you gave us tonight, you provide it for us every year, but I think as we go forward as a district, we really need to look at these numbers, and understand that while we, we have needs across the district, whether it's at bridges, at OVA, purchasing land for the future, we need to take a really hard look at how we're spending those dollars, and make sure that we're not only keeping an eye on the future, but we're being the best district that we can be for the present. Because once a student leaves here, they only, they only have the opportunity for a short period of time. And sometimes we forget that, we forget that a student is only with us for 12 years. We're, we're talking about some land that we may not touch. I want to acknowledge Tim and Kevin's extremely hard-thought-out work that they've done preparing this and negotiating with the owners of the property. Tremendous. What we're able to potentially purchase this property for is very beneficial for the district. And while that's important, if that work wasn't put in now, those kids 12 years from now are going to be the ones that are saying, well, we spent that much money. We have to keep that in mind, and it's a very, very difficult balancing act. And you guys, everybody from Cabinet all the way down to the staff, you do a tremendous job. And nobody, nobody does, I want to think of the right word here. This team was put together in a way that nobody takes more, I'm so eloquent, they just have music.
They always have the district website.
This is a very well-written presentation.
We're trying to be this.
Yeah, yeah. It's like the Academy Awards meeting.
He's trying to football video.
Nobody in this district says, I need more, unless they truly need it. And it's that team atmosphere that has been built around here that everybody does the most with what they have, and then they share. And it's a perfect example of our co-hosts. It's tonight, right? So taking my award and I'm going home before the music starts.
Dr. Brazington?
Yeah, sorry, but I went to the website. I'm just so impressed with Board Book and how it's just so accessible to the public. So again, I just want to encourage people who wonder what's going on at the Board meetings at a time. You know, please go on the district website. You can show the football video that's out there, and there's music. There's also just a great Board Book access, so sorry about that. I just believe I've lapped through Mr. Van Weren's presentation from Thrun Law, so just appreciate him being here and being a resource to the district. Just awesome to have all the football sports completed. Just really happy for Bud Rowley for being recognized as his coaching career just keeps going and going and going. I'm so excited for all the great things that have happened with Mr. Rowley. He is one of the few people that are still here. When I was here, like in the early 80s as a student, it's him and Dr. Chapman. So I'm not old until they retire. And I also want to just appreciate Chad and Mary and Eric and Cory for taking the initiative to want to get a run again or to run for the first time. And we're just really excited to have you represent the community. I'm just excited about making the transition. And I echo everything everyone said.
Yeah, I want to echo what everyone else said too. We end these meetings always saying we're proud to be a Wildcat, you know, and today has to be one of those days, you just got to agree with that. And you've proven why. Buying property that someone will use, that it won't be us probably deciding. Adapting online education, virtual education, so that homeschooled children, who a decade ago was a stigma. We want to make sure that they're just as educated as someone who's sitting in our And we're going to do it because it's the right thing to do. And we're going to forge a future rather than wait for someone to tell us what it can be. All of that, none of, you know, excellence is impossible. You can have excellent people, but excellence like we produce on a regular basis is because of a culture. A culture allows that excellence to breed. And I want to thank Dr. Brazington, I want to thank Dan, I want to thank Jenny, Mr. Steppich. Look, some of you have been, at different times, with different environments, the environment that you are leaving is an environment that allows this board to function smoothly.
Dan's not even...
I'm sorry.
I'll play the music.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Didn't I tell you?
I didn't get them out loud.
So anyway, I just want to thank, I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank you for fostering that environment. I want to thank you for the collaborativeness of what we do. And for the new people coming on board, it's going to be exciting. This is so much fun, and it's so rewarding. And the day that you're standing on a stage, watching kids get their diplomas, and the day that you're seeing all this stuff happening, it is incredible. It is like hair standing on the back of your neck, incredible. So, sorry, Dan.
Mr. Pass?
Handing your keys.
Thank you so much for all that you do, and I'll take it to you.
I think after all that, if I say anything, I'll just get myself in trouble.
You're a huge help out there. You're a Wildcat. It's a great day to be a Wildcat.
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8A, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a staff member if the named person requests a closed hearing, and Section 8C, for the purpose of strategy and negotiation adjustments connected with a collective bargaining agreement.
Is there support? Miss Guthrie, support a roll call vote?
President Brazington?
Here.
No, not here. Nay or nay?
Yay.
Trustee, or President Guthrie?
Yay.
President Donnelly?
Here.
No.
Yay.
Secretary Steppich, yay. Trustee Delisandro?
Yes.
Not that it matters if you're peeping in it. Trustee Bailey?
Yay.
Love it. Trustee Schaefer?
Where is my headset?
803.